Good evening. It is 7:05 and I am calling the Holliston School Committee August 20th, 2020 meeting back in open session. All members are present. Our first item on the agenda is to approve our meeting minutes from May 28, 2020, our special session. Are there any questions, comments, changes? That need to be addressed? Is there a motion to approve the May 20, 2020 special session minutes?
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Lisa.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Lisa, all in favor. Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Abstain.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. July 23, 2020, regular session minutes. Any questions, comments, changes? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved by Lisa.
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Lisa, seconded by Andy, all in favor. Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. July 23, 2020, executive sessions. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve July 23, 2020? And we will retain them. Moved by Cynthia?
Seconded by Catherine.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Catherine, all in favor. Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. Okay. And finally, there was an open meeting law violation that was filed against the Holliston School Committee in regards to our school start time subcommittee meeting minutes. So at the time, the school committee, the subcommittee met on a somewhat regular basis, and we reported out to the full committee. So we never wrote up formal meeting minutes. So a response came from the Attorney General's Office that the school committee was to create meeting minutes from September 2016 through June 2019. Those meeting minutes have been shared with all of you, and we need to approve them as written. And the approval is really about you, you committee members who were not on the subcommittee, just acknowledging that the school, the subcommittee members of Cynthia, Listevnik, and myself, along with the help of our former subcommittee member Martha DeVoe, put these meeting minutes together to the best of our recollection with the notes, our own personal notes, et cetera, that we had. So are there any questions? Ann Louise?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to offer a comment to, you said it, but I want to clarify the reason that I am comfortable voting for this and voting to accept the minutes as written. With all due respect to the two of you, it's really because Martha DeVoe, who is no longer a sitting member of the committee, stepped up and volunteered to write them. And for those of you who don't know her out there, she is extraordinary when it comes to detail. She takes copious notes. I have worked closely with her on a number of things. She has a memory like a steel trap, and perhaps most importantly, unaffordable integrity. And so I'm very confident that if Martha took the time and effort to go back to her notes and use those to assist you in developing these minutes, that they are both comprehensive and accurate. So it's not a vote in favor of the minutes and what they said one way or the other. In that regard, it's accepting them as accurate and comprehensive. So that's why I would vote in favor of them.
So can I just say that typically, when in our subcommittees, we don't, you know, the subcommittee approves the meeting minutes. It's not like when the budget subcommittee submits minutes to the school committee, I approve them. They're just items of information. So typically, you wouldn't approve them anyway. So it is a little bit of a strange request from the AG's office, but we, and most of the things that we actually had notes on were things that we had posted to our website. So they were all, a lot of that was very readily available, but all of us took a lot of notes as well. And Martha did, you know, helped us out by getting all of those, that first draft going. And we really appreciate all the effort that she took to do that, so that we could, made it a lot easier for Stacy and I to go back through all of our notes and cross check. So, thanks.
Lisa?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say something for people that are watching at home, who, this is very inside baseball, and most people don't know what's going on. So I just wanted to say two things. First, that this is not anymore on Cynthia and Stacy than it is on all of us. None of us knew that we were supposed to be approving minutes in budgets in any subcommittee, because no one, we relied on the administration and the attorney to, you know, tell us when we were doing something that we weren't supposed, you know, that there was any issues, and we just never questioned it. It's just the way it had always been done. So we, and I'm not disputing the finding from the Attorney General's Office, you know, it's certainly embarrassing that we messed this up, but none of us were aware of this. And so it's not anymore on Stacy and Cynthia than it is on all of us. And then the other thing I wanted to say was that it is really a technicality. This is a political technicality, in my opinion. I mean, yes, we, there was a clear violation, and again, I'm not quibbling with the AG's decision, but nobody on the school committee had access to any information aside from what was reported to us in full, open session of the school committee. So it's not like we were hiding some information from the public, that the public was somehow not privy to certain pieces of information that were going on to the, going into this decision. Everything was available. And I think Stacy and Cynthia did a really good job in hunting down everything, and Martha too, but I'm speaking to you guys because you're here, that there was a lot of research that went into this. There was a lot of time and effort, and I just don't want that to get lost in this particular vote. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I think that there was no, this decision remained even after we completely reviewed it. So there was, I don't think that there was, there was no harm done here. And I want to, again, thank Stacy and Cynthia and Martha for all their hard work. And that's it.
Thank you, Lisa. Dawn?
I just had a few comments as well. I wanted to go over the fact that the response by the Attorney General's Office to the open meeting law complaint said that they would take, they would resolve the complaint by informal action. And just so people understand the informal action, they specifically declined to vacate any of the votes taken by the school committee, but did ask the full committee to vote on the subcommittee meeting minutes because the subcommittee has been disbanded. You know, when I first heard that, I thought, well, that's kind of strange, because these are meeting minutes from 2016 through May of 2019, before I was even part of this committee. However, if you look at the decision, it cites to other Attorney General opinions or decisions that committees do do this. They, they might have a turnover of terms of one year, two years, or three years, and oftentimes, a specific subcommittee is disbanded, so it goes back to the full committee to vote on. And the Attorney General's opinion cites that precedent. They also have remedial powers to ask us to vote on these. So really, it is, in my opinion, since I was on this committee in October 2019, when this OML complaint was filed, and then there, when the decision came out in June of 2020, even though I wasn't there for this period of time, I understand that I need to vote on this. And in doing that, I recognize the work that Cynthia, Stacy, and Martha put in to provide these minutes to us. Some 44, 43 pages that we've now reviewed. I even had a conversation, I just wanted to include this too, with Martha DeVoe about it, and she did have copious notes from these meetings. She also took Dr. Jackson's notes from these meetings, and I believe other notes that were put together during the meetings, and then she put together these minute meetings. And then I know, you know, that Stacy and Cynthia, you did a great deal of work on this to put this together as well. So I reviewed it, and I just wanted to explain why I was voting on something where it was meeting minutes from 2016 to 2019.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? With that, is there a motion to approve the school start time subcommittee meeting minutes from September, September 2016 through June 2019?
Moved by Lisa.
I got a move by Lisa.
Okay, seconded by Ann Louise.
All right. Moved by Lisa, seconded by Ann Louise, all in favor. Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Abstain.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. Thank you. Does anyone have individual comment tonight? Okay, good, because neither do I, because, oh, Cynthia?
I just wanted to acknowledge the centennial anniversary of the Women's Right to Vote, which was two days ago on the 18th, and I just wanted to call that to the public's attention. Go us!
Excellent. Anybody else on the committee? Catherine?
Maybe this is for a bit later, but I wanted to just sort of have on the table the, the conversation about the chemicals that are within the cleaners that are going to be used in the, in the schools. Maybe, maybe that's for later, but I just wanted to make sure that was sort of brought up and discussed.
Yep. We'll talk about that in the reopening update. Okay. Yep. Mr. Boudet, do you have any comment, public comment?
Just one thing. At 3 something this afternoon, at 3:05 this afternoon, the state or the feds actually extended the waiver that allowed us to serve lunch this summer. So we're actually going to be able to continue to serve food right through September 15. So at least we'll be able to continue to feed the community as they need to. So that's been, again, it came in literally this afternoon, so.
Thank you. I'm so glad we're able to do that. Peter?
I'm all set till later. Thank you.
Susan?
Same. We're just so focused on trying to work on our final plans, and we'll talk about that a little bit.
Excellent. And we do not have anyone registered for a public comment. So with that being said, we have some special guests this evening. So I would like to introduce Select Woman Tina Heine. She has been very involved with the Safe Roots to School program. And so we're going to hear more about that tonight. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Mrs. Heine to talk about that with us, and she can introduce our special guest, Ms. O'Donnell.
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. So I'm deep in the woods in Vermont here, so hopefully the Wi-Fi will cooperate, and we'll get through this quickly. Stacy, thank you for inviting me to the meeting, and Dr. Keston, thank you as well. It's nice to see you all. Rachel O'Donnell is joining us on the call. She has been our Safe Roots to School Coordinator for the past two years. Holliston first partnered with Safe Roots to School in 2018, and since then, we've had quite a bit of success bringing Safe Roots to School through the walking school bus, and the addition of a new crosswalk down at the Woodland Street campuses through the Signs and Lines program. And Rachel's been at our side all along the way. We've had some assessment, some, excuse me, arrival and dismissal assessments done. We've had a walk assessment done. The information has been valuable. The town is acting on it, and we hope the school is acting on it as well. We know you've been very supportive to date. And just as an update from the town side, we submitted our application for the Shared Streets and Spaces grant on Thursday of last week. And that will, if awarded, will see improvements to two crosswalks, the one at Prospect and Pleasant Street, as well as the one at Linden Street, to make walking to school safer and biking to school safer for kids trying to cross Route 16, Washington Street. So again, lots of activity, lots of success with Safe Roots to School today. So I think my comment before I hand it over to Rachel is just, you know, this pandemic and our response to it mean we ought to recognize the importance and need of using outdoor spaces for both transportation and for education. I think Safe Roots to School offers tremendous opportunity at this particular time to build on the efforts of the past two years and really strengthen the ability for our students to walk to school and bike to school. I think Rachel may speak a little bit about that, but I think she's also going to speak about education and curriculum opportunities through the Safe Roots to School program. So with that said, I turn it over to Rachel, and I'll be a happy listener in the background. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Keith, am I able to share my screen for, for the presentation? Oh, okay. One second. Perfect. Because, yeah, I just figured having a better visual just to sort of get a Safe Roots to School 101 might be helpful for everyone, especially for those at home who aren't quite familiar with the Safe Roots to School program. All right, let's see. Can you see my presentation? Yes, awesome. Perfect. So the Holliston Safe Roots to School program, like Tina said, has been happening since 2018, and the main goal of it is to promote sustainable and active student transportation. So this is a federally funded program that is administered by Mastod, and it works to increase walking and biking for K-8 students. So we don't work with high schools, but the aims to reduce the traffic congestion around the schools, which, and then again, increases physical activity if you're walking and biking to school, and then improves the air quality because of the idling reduction that happens around the school grounds. And we operate our program under the six Es. It's education, encouragement, evaluation, engagement, engineering, and then it all falls under the umbrella of equity, because we want to make sure that we're reaching students of all abilities, regardless of geographic location, so rural versus urban, socioeconomic status, race, religion, et cetera. And what's great is that all K-8 schools in Holliston are already Safe Roots to School partners. So that's usually phase one, and that is already complete, which is great. And this is actually a picture in front of Miller. It's the walking Mondays that already occurs. And so the students meet at the Baptist Church on High Street every Monday in the fall and the spring, and then they walk to school escorted by a Safe Roots to School, or a walking school bus leader. So that's been successful, and I think the students really enjoy it. So for, since it's a federally funded program, we can offer a wide variety of services. One of the main services that a lot of schools have been asking for is assistance with their arrival dismissal procedures, just because they're anticipating an influx of parent traffic on the school grounds due to maybe reduced capacity on the buses. So we can assist with either reviewing, or updating, or even creating the procedures for schools, because we want to make sure that all modes of transportation are included. So making sure that procedures for walkers, bikers, buses, and the family vehicles are considered. And then we can help with those communication strategies. So usually, we recommend uploading the procedures to the website, so that way it's easily accessed for families, making sure it's highly visible. That includes a map of the circulation plan, and then also the school start and end times. That way, whoever is picking up a student, they know exactly where they need to be. And if they're walking to school, they know exactly what door to go into. And then, as Tina said, we do have an education component, because especially during the summer, when we saw that students were walking and biking more than ever, we want to make sure that we continue that momentum into the fall, but also complement that with safety education, so that way students are walking and biking safely. So we do offer second grade pedestrian safety curriculum for PE teachers, as well as second, fourth, or eighth grade on bike safety curriculum for PE teachers. And then we do have sixth grade bike and pedestrian related lesson plans for the STEM, social studies, and language arts classrooms. So that could really cover all three K-8 schools on the Woodland Street complex. We do offer all of these materials on our education page on the Safe Roots, Safe Roots to School website, so they're easily accessible. But we can also, maybe during a staff professional development day, you know, come in and do a train the trainer session, so that way the PE teachers are comfortable with the material. We also offer parent guardian driver education resources to make sure that families know the safest way to let their student out of the vehicle, to make sure that it's, you know, the passenger side, making sure the car's in park, so that way the student is safely exiting the vehicle. And then some of the most latest, on, more on the fun side, as far as the education resources go, is we have a pre-recorded bike safety video, a Safe Roots to School trivia game, and then to kind of cater to the more remote learning, we've been doing virtual but live bike safety sessions with our bike instructors. So joining a Zoom call with the classroom or with students who are at home, we can do a bike safety session, which has been very successful throughout the summer, and even at the end of last year, when schools had to close. And then, again, what Tina mentioned about our evaluation tool. So last year, when we got started at Miller, what we did was we created a student address map, which you can see up here. I'm sorry that the blue dots are a little faded on the screen, so it's easier to see in person. But these help identify the clusters where the students are coming from, and that can help us map out potential walking routes, and then do walk audits along those routes to assess the infrastructure and make sure that it actually is safe for students to get to school. We do offer parent surveys to kind of figure out what mode of transportation students use to get to and from school, but we do understand that right now, parents are very much have survey fatigue, perhaps. So we aren't actively promoting that right now. But we do offer these walk audits to assess that infrastructure, and then also help identify park and walk locations. So these are perhaps satellite locations, like that Baptist church, where maybe you could have students get dropped off there, and then walk the remaining way to school. So that way, they're not clogging up the campus. So it's just broadening that congestion radius, having the students get a little bit of physical activity, and then you are reducing the idling around the school grounds. So it's sort of all works together really well. And then we can also help create the walking school bus and/or bike train routes, and again, utilize that bike path. So this was a walk assessment that we did last year, where we were trying to figure out where the best location for a crosswalk would be. And then Tina, as mentioned, that we gave, we issued the Signs and Lines grant. And so this is, again, a bit of a blurry picture on the left, because it was pretty much sunrise when we took this walk assessment. But the bright sunny picture on the right shows that the new path connecting the school campus to the bike path, you know, there's a clear pathway to get to a highly visible crosswalk with pedestrian signage. So it's already being used a lot. My boss actually lives in Sherburne, and she says she takes her kids on this bike path all the time and utilizing that crosswalk a lot. So I'm happy to hear that, and we're hoping to just, you know, keep it in use during the school year. And then one of the things that I think would really enhance the program and really keep it going in Holliston, it would be to form a task force. So a Safe Root specific task force, again, helps make it sustainable in the long term, and it's just a group of different stakeholders in the community, whether it's the school officials, PTO, municipal staff, such as DPW, or the Board of Selectmen, police, just so that way everyone can get in the same room and discuss all things Safe Roots to School, whether that's finding walking school bus volunteers, trying to troubleshoot certain infrastructure issues, applying for these grants. So it's just a one-stop shop of people in the room moving this program forward. And the people or the communities that I see the most successful task forces is when you do have that variety of people in the same room. So there, Newton is an example. They've had their task force for, I think, 10-plus years now. I know that Fall River has a task force, and that's the picture that you see down with the bike. So they help with bike rodeos or bike safety training. So really, everyone has a hand in the program. And so if there was, say, turnover in one particular aspect, then everyone else would fill in. So that way, it doesn't, the program doesn't go away if it was just on one person's shoulders. And then the last, you know, the summary and like the, my recommendations for Holliston, because we've already had such great momentum, and I just hope that we can continue it, is to form this task force to incorporate this pedestrian and bike safety into the PE curriculum, and then actively promote walking and biking to school, you know, by identifying these park and walk locations, and form more walking school buses and bike trains. Another thing to consider is to include Safe Roots to School in the wellness and transportation policies. We do have model language under the Equity page on our website, and then we also have crossing guard training materials on the website, just to make sure that everyone has uniform training. And with that, I will take any questions. I know that was a lot of information at once, but I just kind of wanted to get a blanket, Safe Roots to School 101 for everyone watching, so that way everyone knows about it, and maybe there would be an increase in community engagement and support for the program. Like I said, and these are, this is my contact information. I'm very accessible via phone and email, so I would be happy to come down to Holliston and assist in anything that you need.
Thank you, Rachel. We, Tina has actually come to a couple of our meetings to share about the program. I feel like we had a really successful start with our elementary PTO organization. They got some, some steady volunteers. It was, you know, up until school was closed, it was, you know, a well, well-run program. So I appreciate that. Rachel, can you unshare your screen so I can see my faces, so I can take questions for you? All right, Ann Louise?
Rachel, thank you so much for that presentation, and Tina, thank you for all your hard work and advocacy in helping to bring this to where it is today. Really, I think it's amazing and awesome, and it'll be a huge benefit for our students and families. I just have one question, and I'm not sure it's even a question, but so strange times. As we are planning for the reopening of schools, you know, the transportation concept is a tough one, and I know many parents are planning on driving their students to school anyway. And I do have some concerns about the congestion that will create down at the elementary complex in particular. I am, despite your concerns about survey fatigue, I'm wondering if it isn't valuable to get a little more information around that. I know we've done the survey on who plans to ride or not ride the bus and all of that. I think your survey is a little bit different.
Yep.
And that information feels more relevant now than ever, and I'm wondering if it's worth risking a little survey fatigue, because I think parents might value the opportunity to share information on that. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Yeah. And what I think would be great is that if we were to, say, have the survey towards the beginning, it would be a great baseline data to sort of figure out, you know, maybe by the end of the school year, have we seen a significant mode shift? Have we seen an increase of, you know, walkers and bikers, you know, through this baseline data? And the other thing I will say is that the survey can be done online. It can be, it's a link. You, the principals just figure out a date, a set of two weeks, that will work for them. And then I create the survey, and then they can tweet it out, they can, you know, send it via an eBlast. It's just a simple link that parents click on, and it's offered, I believe, in nine or 10 different languages, and it takes less than five minutes to complete. Schools that do get over 50% participation do get $250 worth of incentive items. It's like safety items such as bike lights, wrist pedometers, and I think drawstring backpacks with like a reflective strip on the bottom, just so that where they're, they're more visible. So that certainly doesn't hurt. It's a little bit more incentive to get over 50% participation for each school, so. Um it's a little bit more incentive to get um over fifty percent participation for each school, so.
I'm not, um that's, that's great. Um it it's interesting, I'm not sure I'd use 2020 as a baseline for anything in this.
That's true. That is very true.
But um but I think it'd be still great because you might find parents, if they thought they could um have access to a walking school bus, that might be great this year, maybe they change their mind next. But um but if they thought that might be a possibility and we had enough interest, I don't know, that sort of thing might might be useful.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Yeah, no problem. So the difference between the student address maps is that, you know, every student is accounted for, but we don't know what mode they're using to get to school. Whereas the parent survey, we could know the each individual mode of transportation that students are using. So if we identified a cluster of students that are driving to school that live close to the school grounds, that's an identi- like that's a potential location to figure out, well, why are they not walking to school? Is there a barrier preventing them from walking? Cynthia?
Thank you, um thank you, Rachel, and thank you, Tina, for bringing this up, um having this presentation. I'm curious about um if there is, in your survey data, does that help us with things like trying to get more sidewalks? Because you just mentioned about barriers. And I can say that, you know, at least, you know, I live in the Queens area and it's, it, there is no direct way where there's sidewalks all the way from where I live to get to any of the schools. So I know that, you know, kids do, some of them ride their bikes on Winter Street and different things, but there there's, it's not really a a safe route.
Right.
So I was wondering whether or not that survey, yeah, definitely addressing what barriers would be. Because I I think there would be more of them if we had more sidewalks in town.
Yeah, I certainly don't think that data hurts. Um you know, it it can only enhance um, you know, potential infrastructure improvements. I know that, so Safe Roots to School offers two different infrastructure opportunities that I've seen in the last two years. One is the Signs and Lines grant, which is what Holliston has already received. And that's sort of the smaller, I think, you know, $6,000 for exactly what it sounds like, signs and lines. And then you have the bigger ticket infrastructure items, like the million dollar sidewalk improvements or curb bump outs, you know, the traffic calming measures. I only saw that in the fall of 2018, so I don't know if and when they're going to open that up for um, you know, applications again. Um once I hear and that gets, you know, um word out, then I will absolutely pass that along to you. But the fact that all schools, K through eight schools in Holliston are partner schools, you've already satisfied the first requirement, which is that schools have to be partners for at least six months. And so that's, you know, the first check.
Good start.
Yeah, great start.
Great, thank you.
Cynthia, my apologies for putting you on the spot on this, especially since you're on vacation. But I think there's going to be some questions about now where we have this new sidewalk crosswalk, not sidewalk, crosswalk from the, from the trail to the Placentino parking lot. Is there discussion about having a crossing guard there?
No, so that would be a question for Chief Stone and I can certainly bring it up to him. I mean, what, I I think that you have two things. You have great signage that was added with the grant. You have the the striped crosswalk, so it's, you know, a very uh safe crosswalk, which I maybe, not more importantly, but very significant is the fact that you're in a 20 mile per hour school safety zone. We don't have any of those outside of that immediate area. And so right now, it's a budget issue, right? It's pulling money out of um the police budget to either add a crossing guard or move a crossing guard. And if you're moving a crossing guard, you're moving them away from an area that's not in a school safety zone and doesn't currently have those safety features that this particular crosswalk has. However, Stacy, it's a great question and I'm happy to reach out to Chief Stone and get his sense on it. My my, from earlier conversations, it would have been, we pull a crossing guard from one location and we place a crossing guard at that location. I'm not sure in the big picture, that's going to be the safest thing, again, for those reasons I mentioned, but I will certainly ask him.
Thank you. Ann Louise?
Um so Tina, it's interesting. I mean, this is where that survey might be useful because if we find out that because um because there's a change in bus ridership related to um the pandemic and more kids are walking, it might help justify incremental staff there. And at least on a temporary basis, short term, that might be very useful and might be something that could be paid for out of care.
Yeah, I wonder that too. I'm not entirely sure on that one. I, that's a great question to ask, um and I will ask it. There's a.
I I I don't know.
There's another piece I want to add to that, which is Chief Stone has, is unveiling a traffic unit within the police department. I don't believe they've had one before and I think this would fit squarely under that. Uh and so this is a great time to start the conversation. So if I may, I'll circle back around with Chief Stone next week, early next week and and respond to you guys.
No, that's perfect, thank you. And, you know, it, just to be clear, that there's already an existing relationship with um the select board, um in particular, the Miller and Placentino principals. Um and they have done some surveys and Mr. Boudet with with um traffic and logistics. So we're just going to keep moving ahead with that relationship and uh strengthening it and see what we can do for the future. Are there any other questions from the committee or the administrators? No?
Well, I have one, so.
Yes. Tina?
Well, actually Susan had her hand up first, so go ahead.
I was just going to say thank you because I haven't heard enough about this program. I had just some little bits and details on this and to get the full presentation tonight was really helpful. And we are certainly happy to partner with you on future surveys to get health and wellness um encouraged with our student population.
Um St- thank you. Stacy, my question was, uh I just lost it. Hold on, see, this is what vacation does.
Yeah, that's.
Critical thing.
You enjoy that vacation.
Task force, uh coming back to Rachel's uh slides about forming a task force. I do think that that's a critical next step to to Rachel's comment about sustaining it over over time, a long period of time. Um I'm more than happy and will reach out to the PTO. Especially, I guess, the elementary. I don't have connections and haven't had contact with the middle school, but Rachel's presented some curriculum and certainly there's an interest at the middle school.
Yeah.
Jordan, I believe, has spoken about a desire to see this Safe Roots to School um come into his, his school a little bit more. And so um I wouldn't mind through the school committee having that kind of introduction with the middle school PTO.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, also an opportunity to brainstorm for who could serve on a task force.
Yeah, definitely. I will, um I'll email you the president of the elementary PTO, for sure. And then we'll loop in Dr. Casca and we can figure out appropriate players.
That'll be great.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight and uh please go enjoy your vacation, Tina. And Rachel, it was so nice to meet you and uh we look forward to, you know, continuing our partnership and we'll chat with you soon.
Perfect, thank you so much for having me.
Thanks for joining us, have a great night.
Bye bye.
Great. And I'd like to make a recommendation for old business. I'd like to make this um COVID-19 school, school closure update something of the past. Um school, we're now in summer session and so the closure piece has really ended. So I think we should no longer have this as an agenda item and move forward with our, you know, COVID-19 school reopening update. So if everyone's okay with that, I'd like to, you know, stop using that as an agenda item because it's really misrepresenting the situation, if everyone's okay with that. All right. With that, uh Dr. Patello, do you want to give your summer curriculum update?
Sure, yes. Um uh we had a a few projects that happened at the beginning of the summer and then most of them are happening right around now because people were kind of delaying a little bit more than is typical in order to uh hear more about the reopening plans. But we have over, it's over forty-five projects going on throughout the the district. At the high school, pretty much every department is representative. I talked a little bit about some of the projects related to equity and anti-bias that are going on. But we also have projects uh related to some new courses like True Crime Narratives and Election 2020. We also have projects related in the math department, um in the science department, including a a project on AP computer science principles. Uh we also have a project related to uh refocusing the advisory curriculum on social emotional learning. All of these projects um are connected to our district priority, priority areas, but also common themes that existed throughout the district were um a a lot of projects, as I mentioned before, around equity and anti-bias. And pretty much every project had the connection to how did, what does curriculum instruction look like in a hybrid environment? How do we um, you know, whether it's at the uh early elementary level, uh how do we um, you know, prepare for a, you know, a social distancing um uh instruction uh that might look different, uh as well as some teachers who uh will be serving our remote students at the elementary level, preparing for that. Uh and then from grades, you know, three through 12, all of the projects, um in addition to whatever um topics that they were looking to enhance curriculum instruction in that area, we're looking at how do we do this effectively in this very unique time? Um so it it definitely gave us a starting point um to, you know, for people to kind of work on uh the complex uh teaching um that we're going to be taking on in this upcoming year. At the middle school, uh every department was, again, represented, uh English and social studies, science and math, multiple projects. Again, some concentrated on particular units like um the grade seven social studies has a, as a new unit on India and China, which happens to be the first unit of the year. So they, um there were two purposes for that, you know. First of all, it's a new unit for them. And secondly, it's the beginning of the year, so they can look at how do we be uh deliver that curriculum and engage students effectively? While how do we do that in a hybrid environment? So what components would be best served when kids are in person? Uh what components would be best served when kids are remote? And how do we kind of intertwine the remote and um in-person students uh to have uh an effective uh experience that allows them to continue to develop greater understanding, develop essential skills and and move through the curriculum again in a very unique time? Uh we have um projects in in uh grade six, seventh, and eighth, grade science, uh same thing in math, uh projects in Spanish, art, uh music, uh skill-based health, and also social distancing, uh physical education. So how can you infuse physical education uh at both the um, some of the uh activities kids might be doing in school as well as the asynchronous activities they might be doing at home? And how do you do that in a way that's so safe with social distancing? So thinking about, you know, physical education uh in a way that is not only, you know, promoting what we've always tried to promote, but is also safe in this uh COVID environment. And then at Miller and Placentino, there were um uh numerous projects. We had um our, some of our um leaders in our uh literacy um endeavors uh did um some extensive work at the beginning of the summer, uh developing uni- units of study. And in doing so, again, they were thinking about how do we do this in a uh hybrid environment? Uh but also, how do we infuse diverse literature into the curriculum uh using the fountain pen materials that we've uh invested so uh so strongly in? There's also, um we have a Envision, we're still using Envision Math in our elementary schools, but there's a 2020 version that we're uh uh using now. And so how do we um get up to speed on this new version? And also, how do we take advantage of the digital elements of that um curriculum in order to uh support our hybrid learning this year? Um and then we, again, we had other projects at the elementary school in world languages, including Spanish and French immersion, in art, in um, in in physical education. So again, there was a wide variety of of projects. So people really um, you know, were excited to do some work. Uh they, they wanted to start to tackle some of these issues ahead of time. And so we have some very active uh, you know, work going on um this summer with some curriculum work.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? No. And I actually intentionally um moved policy. Um that was the next thing on the agenda, but I want to give Peter a little bit of a break because I know he's gonna have two more sections to talk through. So I'd like to turn it over to Cynthia. We have our first reading of um a new policy uh EBCFA for face coverings.
Right, yes. So as you all know, when we have a new policy, that means you get to hear me read it all the way through. And I'm not as fast as Lisa Koshen, so you're all just going to have to bear with me. And please keep in mind, this is a first draft, so we're just going to go through it. If there's other questions, there probably was even some changes. I know, Susan, you sent me some things, sorry, um about um some conversations back and forth with Lynn Bowler, who's our nurse manager, and um some other research that we'll include. And we can talk about that after. It's just, I wasn't able to change that before we came to this meeting. So anyway, so I'm just going to read through. So buckle up, okay. "The Holliston Public Schools is committed to providing a safe environment as schools reopen during the COVID-19 pandemic. According to public health experts, one of the best ways to stop the spread of coronavirus and to keep members of our school community safe is to use a face mask, to use of, is the use of face masks or face coverings. Therefore, in accordance with guidance from the Center for Disease Control, CDC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESE, and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, DPH, the following requirements are in place until further notice. An appropriate face covering is defined per CDC guidelines as: Clean, consisting of multiple layers of fabric, in parentheses, at least two ply, close parentheses, covers the nose and mouth, is well-fitted to the face, and is washable without losing shape. The CDC does not recommend using masks for source control if they have an exhalation valve or vent. Further, face coverings are not surgical masks or respirators, such as N95 masks. These are critical supplies that should continue to be reserved for healthcare workers and other medical first responders as recommended by current CDC guidance. A face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, and on school transportation, even when social distancing is observed. All students in grades preschool through 12 plus are expected to wear a face covering as described above. Individuals may be excused from the requirement up for the following list of reasons per CDC guidance. The individual has trouble breathing, is unconscious, incapacit- I'm sorry, in, is, I should say is, incapacitated, cannot remove the mask or face covering without assistance." Those were all bulleted. In addition, mask or face coverings will not be required for anyone who has a medical, behavioral, or other challenge making it unsafe to wear a face mask or face covering. A written note from a physician is required for a requested exemption. Parents may not excuse their child from the face mask requirement by signing a waiver. Additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced, in bullet points, during mask breaks, while eating or drinking, during physical education class, in parentheses, that take place outside at least 10 feet apart, close parentheses, while outside. Exceptions to this policy under certain circumstances, such as for students with medical, behavioral, or other challenges who are unable to wear masks, must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local board of health. Face shields or physical barriers may provide an alternative in some instances. A student's mask or face covering is to be provided by the student's family. Staff members are responsible for for providing their own face coverings. However, the district will supply disposable face covering for individuals who arrive at a building or board school transportation without one. If students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with the parent slash guardians to determine whether an exception is appropriate or the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning until such time as they can comply with the requirement or the requirement is lifted. Violations of this policy by staff will be handled in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy. Visitors in violation of this policy will be denied entry to the school district, school slash district facility. This policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee. This policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee." And now I will take questions, comments, edits, changes. Dawn?
Cynthia, I'm a little bit concerned about where it says, let me just go right back up here. Sorry about that.
Anne Louise, I'll get you a second.
Third paragraph down, "Face coverings are not surgical masks." And then a little bit lower, we talk about the school provide disposable masks. Aren't the disposable masks that the school is providing surgical masks? I, I'm not, and I clicked on the CDC guidelines, and I'm not sure that it says you can't use surgical masks. It might say you can't use respirators and N95s. But I don't see there where it says you can't. So surgical masks are disposable masks, aren't they?
Yeah, they are.
So that doesn't make sense. If we're handing them out and providing disposable masks to staff or to students that don't have them, then we can't prohibit it in paragraph three.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it's, I think what they're saying in that, and maybe needs to be clearer, is face coverings are not necessarily surgical masks. Meaning like someone doesn't have to purchase them. Is that not what your understanding of it was?
Well, that's what I think you may want to add because, and I'm sorry to happen, but that was my question precisely, Dawn. And the reason is that they're widely available. Like you can go to, you know, every place from Staples to BJ's and Costco and pick a, pick a box of 50 up pretty easily right now. And I suspect that will be what many parents do. So I'd be reluctant to prohibit the use of those. I think we, maybe the language is that we don't require that.
Okay.
Right. It might be something to that effect that they're not only surgical masks.
There is a difference, I believe, from all this reading, which I'm getting to know way too much about, a difference between a procedural mask, which is kind of a downgraded three, the, the, the three, you know, it's one of one of these. A downgrade one versus a surgical one that looks like this, but it's upgraded from there. So.
Again, I don't think we want to be in the business of distinguishing. Like if a kid shows up with that, the way the policy is written, they couldn't wear it. And never mind staff. Like if they have them, if they have access to them and they choose or need to wear that, I think they should be able to.
I, I think, yeah, I think it was supposed to, I think it was just supposed to trying to distinguish between, you know, you can wear a face covering that doesn't have to be a surg- a mask or it doesn't have to be a mask, it's a face covering. So I guess that maybe includes gaiters or something. Lisa, did you have a thought?
Yeah, two questions. So the last sentence of paragraph two, where we say "We will not allow students or staff to wear neck gaiters, bandanas, or masks with exhalation valves." We're seeing those as threes everything. So they can't wear neck gaiters of any kind, right?
Well, I don't, I don't have that in this one. We updated it from, I think the one you've printed, maybe.
This is the one in our packet.
Oh, interesting. Sorry. That's not what I just read out loud. That's okay. I was like, did I say neck gaiters? I'm like, I'm not seeing it, but.
Did you delete that whole sentence?
I, I deleted the, we deleted the sentence about neck gaiters.
Why? Why?
Because we aren't, we're not, we don't have to not, we don't have to restrict people from not using them, apparently.
But we.
I can add it back in.
There that they're not effective.
Yeah, I think we.
I totally would like to.
I think we did leave the, take neck gaiters out right now. There's some, there's some new data, but we hadn't discussed that data. But I think the last time we met, we decided to leave it as it is in our reopening policy. We're not allowing neck gaiters at this time.
That because it sounds like there is a lot of information out there now.
And also though, it says very, oh, sorry Keith, it says very clearly though, in the first sentence of the second paragraph, "An appropriate face covering is designed, is defined by CDC per guidelines as clean, consisting of multiple layers of fabric, at least two ply."
Right.
So there may be neck gaiter out there that's two ply. Certainly not the 12 that I just bought that I need to now dust rags. So I think that's why we had taken that term, that specifically out based on some misinformation. But at the end of the day, your face covering or mask needs to be at least two ply.
Right.
Well, but, wait, I had one other question too. But so the neck gaiters though, even if you, you can double them up, are we gonna, so we're gonna say that's okay, even though there's a lot of information out there now that they're not effective?
We'll review it. I'll, I'll look at it again because I think Lynn Bowler and also Dr. Kuska was sent, sent a whole bunch of stuff about some updated guidance on that. So we'll, we'll look at it again and talk about it again.
Okay.
And then I have no like, you know, I have no stake in wanting to have neck gaiters or not having neck gaiters. It's more what's the safest.
So my other question is, are we gonna address the, I know a lot of parents, especially of younger children, but also some parents of, of kids who have speech and language challenges on their, that are addressed in their IP's. We've had a lot of questions about the masks that have windows. Are we gonna address that? Or do we, do we need to address that? I don't know.
I don't know if we have to, but we can certainly talk about it with.
I mean, is that something, I guess as long as this policy isn't gonna prohibit that, then we should be covered, right?
I don't, I don't think it does. It's, did you get, I didn't, I didn't ask that question. We didn't ask that question of Lynn Bowler, though, did we? Susan, I don't think we did.
No, I don't think we got that far.
Let's ask, let's ask Lynn Bowler about it.
Right. Because we are considering for some staff might, that would be applicable for their role to be able to have the children view their mouths.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Dawn, did you have something else you want to say? Sorry, and then I'll get to Peter.
I, I do. So if we have in there that the CDC does not recommend using masks for source control if they have an exhalation valve or vent, or we have in the second sentence about no masks with exhalation valves. If we have that, can we strike that third paragraph that is incredibly confusing to say face coverings are not surgical masks or respirators? Because you've now covered the respirators with the exhalation valves. And we may also have high risk, we could have high-risk people.
I lost you.
Can't hear.
Is it just me or is it Dawn?
I can't hear her.
Okay. We lost you, Dawn.
I thought it was me, but.
Cut your video off, Dawn. See if that helps.
Want to wear an N95 or a KN95, can you hear me?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, sorry. Um, I, I am concerned about this third paragraph, and I would like to strike it, and here's why. Is that, I think it's confusing because we refer to surgical masks here and then disposable masks, and nobody's gonna come and police who the manufacturer is and whether it's a two or three ply disposable, or it's a surgical mask. But beyond that, there will be people who are high-risk that may want to have an N95 or a KN95, and so long as it doesn't have an exhalation valve, I don't think we should be prohibiting it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's just that we didn't, this wording came from Lynn Bowler as well because I think it was just that we don't want parents to feel that they do have to go out and get those because we know how, how difficult it is. So I, I would like to have some of that wording in, but if we can tweak it to make it clear that we're just certainly allowed, we're just not recommending bought and purchase those because they are designed specifically for our healthcare workers.
I also think it was about an equity issue too. Like I don't, people shouldn't have to feel like they have to go and buy these expensive, you know, masks to, you know, that's, I think that was part of it too. So I think we just need to tweak the wording of it, but I think you're right, Dawn.
So not required or recommended, but allowed.
Not required. Okay. Okay. Peter?
This is just a terminology thing. We've been trying to use the physical distancing versus social distancing because it's a different connotation.
So what did you want me to, did you want me to change that? Physical distancing from social distancing?
Yeah, that, that would be my recommendation whenever social distancing is, is stated using physical distance.
Okay.
Can you send us an updated copy? I mean, I know we'd get that in the next packet, but I've, I'm looking at the wrong copy, obviously, from our packet.
Yeah, I think Lisa had, Aronian had updated it like the other, yeah. Because we had made some changes from our meeting on Monday, and I asked her to update that. So I apologize that if it didn't, if you printed it beforehand.
Well, I mean, we have a screen though. I don't think we ever got the copy that you just read.
The, the one that Lisa has, has the neck gaiter piece that you were referring to. So I'm wondering if the, I, I, yeah, I can share this on my screen, but I don't want to confuse people if that's gonna.
No, not sharing. No, just sharing. We're gonna vote on this again, right?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, because this is our first read.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to see the copy that you read tonight. I just kind of wanted to see that before.
I'll share it with you. No problem. Anne Louise, and then I'll get back to you, Dawn.
Yeah, so Peter, I have a question for you, and I, I want to make clear, I have not got a strong point of view on this, but is the difference in connotation enough to justify departing from language that is so commonly understood and accepted and has an understood meaning by the general public? I mean, it's been like feed into us for six months, it's all of the kinds. So is it, is it worth, and I don't know the answer to this, like I'm guessing at what you mean the connotations are. But is it worth deviating from that when, when the term social distancing is so widely used by the medical world, et cetera? And is there value in that, I guess?
Or does it mean something different? Is that what you mean?
Right. Well, that's actually, I'm worried about that because I think people understand social distancing and physical distancing, it's not like it could be a rocket scientist, but why would we depart from the commonly understood language is the question.
I guess in the rest of our district kind of documents developed by admin, we've been using the term physical distancing because it means being distanced physically. Where social distancing has, you know, multiple connotations. So we actually want kids to socialize, but we want them to be physically distanced when they do. So I know just, just if we wanted to remain consistent with what we've been using, physical distancing would be my preferred by me.
Okay. Dawn?
So at the bottom of page one, last paragraph, additionally, face masks or coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing of six feet is enforced. I feel like that could be, you're in a classroom, you only have five kids there, and they're more than six feet apart. So can you take your mask off? I don't think that's what we want, right? If you're inside in that classroom, you're, even if you're more than six feet from them, aren't the masks staying on? So I think we need to somehow reword that too. I, I don't like.
Okay.
The only, the only exception would be during the lunchtime block that they would have to remove them to eat. So if that's, if that's why we want to make sure we have careful wording on that.
What, right. So it was saying appropriate social distancing is enforced, which is I guess the difference because we're actually super, should I mention say, say supervising instead?
I, I mean, is it saying that if you're more than six feet apart, you can have your mask off? Because that's not what we want to say.
No, it's more that they're supervising because I guess it's what it's trying to say is they are supervising them while they're, during mask breaks, while they're eating, and during physical education classes, when they take place outside and 10 feet apart and while outside.
Okay.
So should I just be, so maybe, yeah, I think we need, well, let's, let's work on that at our next meeting about it, but it needs to be, we need to fix that.
Okay.
Catherine?
I just, in that same section, I just think that the first two are exceptions to when you're inside, like that, those are the only times you can take them off. And the other two are talking about outside. So maybe if we just separate those into two separate sections, rather than having one guiding sentence to, to four bullet points, I think it might be a little bit more clear. Because I, I agree with Dawn. I, I do read the first sentence as saying, if you're, if you're closer than, if you're six feet apart and inside, you can have it, you can have your mask off.
Okay.
And I, I know that's not what you're trying to say, but I, I do think that's how the sentence reads. But I think if we separate the first two bullets and the second two bullets, and then describe them differently, it'll be more clear.
Okay. All right, we'll work on it.
I think that's a good suggestion that were.
That, that being said, though, some mask breaks might actually happen.
Inside. Yeah.
Why?
Right. But those are the, those are the exceptions, right? I mean, that, those are the, you have to have a mask on all the time inside, except when there's a mask break, or except when eating or drinking. Right? So you're outlining the exceptions to indoor mask removal. Otherwise, you have to have it on all the time. And the second two bullet points are, are concepts that involve outside. So I think you should separate those and explain them in two guiding sentences.
Okay.
Separate, separating them out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anne Louise?
Um, maybe I missed something, but other than eating, when is there a need for an indoor mask break?
Well, I can let Susan answer that, but.
I would say definitely on, I mean, if it's too cold to go outside, there might be a time when they go out into the hallway and they're spread very far apart, one at a time. They might take a walk out with an adult and just have a quick mask break for that, that purpose. So there are going to be some brief times for that, that would happen in the building, but not likely in the classroom.
Okay, I'd like to, maybe as we continue working on our, our plans, like discuss that further. Maybe between now and our next meeting, when you have to read the policy again, maybe I'll understand it better.
Okay. Well, I guess mask breaks will look different depending on what school you're, you know, where you are. So when the, you know, younger kids pre-K through third grade are in school for the, conceivably the whole day, they're more likely going to have more supervised mask breaks. Whereas if you're at the middle school and high school, maybe they might have one or none. Oh, I, I don't really know. But so, but if it is freezing outside and we're not able to go outside, they would need to have a mask break, I suppose, somewhere with windows open, et cetera. But I guess that's more of a detail about our reopening plan and not necessarily about the face mask requirement. Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments? Because we're gonna work on this more. It's not like the last time you're gonna see it. But you can feel free to please email me if you have other thoughts about it. I will share this one. Andy, go ahead.
Just really quick, and maybe I missed it, but this hopefully is going to be a temporary policy. Is this presumably one that is
Yeah.
to roll it out, we roll it out, and when we don't, just sitting in the background.
Right. So this one will go along with a suite of policies that we've received guidance about that are about our emergency plans that we're working on that is specific to, you know, the governor's emergency order. So in, in theory, once, when that's rescinded, then this will be rescinded as well. So once that's lifted, we could, you know, this will no longer be in place.
Okay, perfect.
So yeah, it would be temporary. Well, one would hope, God willing.
It better be. Thank you.
So, okay. Thank you, everybody, for your attention. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. All right. Now to our new agenda item, school reopening update. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kuska and Mr. Boudai and Dr. Patel.
Thank you. So as you know, we are working tirelessly trying to get that first day of school to begin, and it's happening sooner than later. There's a lot to do still. We are still dedicated to the common goal of working towards a reopening date for our students on September 16th. And the administration at the district and the building level have all been working daily to try to make that date happen effectively. But there are still hurdles to overcome. We've always said that there, even though we have a reopening plan that was voted on by school committee and submitted to DESI, there are still some unknown entities, and we're working on trying to move towards the goal of our reopening of September 16th, but knowing that it could be subject to change. If there are some changes, we are, we will definitely get those out to parents as soon as possible. We are in the process of hiring additional staff because we know that to do this successfully with the six-foot distancing in place, we are planning on hiring additional par professionals. We're hiring some health and safety monitors, and I'll be going over the new job description we have proposed to vote on tonight. We would be posting for those positions tomorrow because it's important. As, as soon as school is coming, we know that we are have these additional people to hire and that we don't want that to impede a successful opening as well by not having enough staffing in place because we are increasing based on the need to separate students into more classrooms and keep them at that distance. If we are going to make any changes, as I said, we'll let parents know as soon as possible. We're not trying to withhold any information. We're just working towards that end. We did reopen the parent's service. We did reopen the parent survey as, um, we had sent it out and it was supposed to be open until Monday night. We did not get, uh, as many students in that survey as we would like. We closed it at 6:00 PM Monday night, but there still were about 600 students not accounted for in that. So in order to plan effectively, I asked Mr. McLeod to send that survey link out again in, in the hope that our parents who were hesitant to complete it or just didn't get the chance to will enter that information. In order to plan effectively, we need to know if parents are approving or choosing the option A to have their students in person in either a hybrid model for grades four to 12 or an in-person model for grades K to three, or are they choosing option B to have their students fully remote based on their safety needs or other circumstances that might be on their control? So that information hopefully will help us finalize because it does have an impact on staffing needs depending on where students are, whether they're in a remote option or an in-person option as well. So I know that, um, parents are anxiously waiting and we are waiting as well to ensure that we can move forward to our in-person preference for our students for September 16th. And I don't have any way of knowing for sure. There's going to be some unforeseen circumstances that will prevent that. But as I said, we are, we are dedicated to moving toward that goal. And I will make sure that if there are any changes that are going to happen, we will get those out to parents immediately because I know that we're all waited on, waiting on bated breath. Um, lots of people are depending on this so that they can get back to somewhat normal with their lives. And we are also feeling the same way. We want to see our students again. We want them back safely. But I'm saying the word safely because that is the primary goal to have our students and staff, staff effectively return to the building in a, a healthy, safe manner, and that is always the goal. And there are so many things to put in place to get to that goal, to, to that goal.
Susan, can you, um, can you talk to, um, ex, the discussion about will extended day be offered? Can you give an update on that at all?
Sure, um, Mr. Boudet and I have been talking about this a lot. You know, the, the one thing we are fearful of as far as, we have so many moving parts to consider because we have to sanitize effectively, and that takes time. So trying to keep our cohort small and all of these reopening plans to minimize any negative contact with other cohorts and also ensuring that our custodial staff and our, uh, other staff are going to have time to properly sanitize each night in between and during the day. We are sanitizing our rooms three times a day and our facilities three times a day. So to order, in order to do that effectively, we do want to minimize the amount of hours that school is in session and try to keep to that. So at this point, we are not thinking we will be able to allow an extended day model, but that doesn't mean it's completely off yet. We're still trying to consider that, but I just don't want to, um, I don't want parents to consider that we are able to offer it at this point because right now, the, the primary goal is to get the kids back in session in the normal hours that we put into our reopening plan. And the more we veer off of that plan and try to open the, uh, the school buildings longer, it's going to make it less effective. So I, I don't want to say no yet, but I am concerned that we may not be able to offer that because of the limitations we're under.
Cynthia?
I'm just, thank you. Um, I'm just wondering if we had an alternative location to use extended day? Would that make it so that we could use it? It's just about the facility, correct?
It, it is about the facility, but we also have things like, um, who's going to clean the facility? If we move to another facility, uh, nursing staff, because the other piece we have is, for example, if we had a child that had, uh, diabetes, we are fortunate when they're in our buildings, we extend our days with our own staff, and we were able to do that. When we don't have the additional staff and trying to put that into another location would be very challenging. So that is one limitation we're up against, and we, we don't know that we can make that happen.
Okay.
And the school committee also sent the, uh, the, the school committee, uh, controls, you know, the extended days underneath the auspices of the school committee.
Right.
So they have to meet those guidelines, which includes having things like an isolation room, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Okay, thank you. So Lisa?
Um, so is this going to be a discussion I am at a future meeting? Are we going to be able to kind of work through this a little bit? I feel like that's kind of a, a biggie. That's, you know, not something I want to just write off without further discussion.
And no, we have not written it off. I just want to be, uh, we, we did meet with Carol White today and we are reminded more and more of our limitations with the hours that we are in control of with our students. So I'm just being honest right now. As of right now, we don't.
I appreciate that.
We don't have that, we don't have the opportunity to extend the day beyond the hours that we have staff in the building. However, um, we're still trying to think outside the box to get there. I just don't want to mislead parents along the way.
Okay.
And that's fair.
We, Keith, we have to make a final decision on that.
Or when will you have to make a final decision on that?
Well, it would be prior to students entering the building. So where, I mean, I know I don't want to late, wait to the last minute. So I think we're getting close to trying to see if we can get to that point. I would say within the next week or so, we will finally have to decide, and we would want to come back to you. So if we do have, uh, we did talk about maybe having another school committee meeting in the near future before our next meeting, and that would be a time where I'd hopefully be able to solidify any answer for you on that.
Keith, before you, um, before you give your update, Ann Louise, I'll get you one second. Before you give your update, there were a couple of the high-level things that, um, I had shared with you about wanting to understand a little bit better. Um, outdoor space, can you talk about the tents and where they would be? And people are asking if they can donate and send in their own tents, et cetera. Um, Catherine asked about the cleaning chemicals. And the other thing is, can you just give an update on, um, I know the MIAA just gave, just came to a decision and released an, on the desktop, um, memo the other day.
Stacy, I don't mean to interrupt, but before you switch those topics, can I just ask Susan something related to the extended day? I'm sorry. Um, Susan, I feel like, and, and maybe you said this, and, and if you did, I apologize. I think we need to let parents know that they may, either we say, give them a hard date and say, you know, seven days from today or exactly two days today, we will have a final decision. And we, we ourselves commit to that on the extended day thing because they may need to make tentative alternate arrangements. Or maybe we just simply let them know, you may want to consider making those tentative alternate arrangements. It's possible this, this could go either way. Like, I, I, I'd hate to leave parents just with an ambiguity, not knowing when a decision would be made.
Right, we just met with, um, Carol today for that purpose.
No, I know.
We did discuss that with her, and she knows that, um, she, she said the same thing. Can we let her know what date? Because she has to tell the parents that. So we're very, we're very close to finalizing that information, and we would have Carol get the information out to parents uh, very soon if, if we do go that route.
Right, thank you. Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Boudet. Oh, and transportation, if you, that's the other, that was the other big thing. If you could talk about why people still need to pay a bus fee, et cetera. Thank you.
Just a quick little update. Um, the, uh, so outside, I mean, we've purchased four tents. We have four tents on order. Um, three of them are going to go in courtyards to protect them. Um, the heavier duty tends to leave up in perpetuity. We've been getting quotes between 13 and $17,000 a tent. And it's, at this point, a little bit of price gouging going on, so we're working through that. Um, outside space, though, we've ordered 800 chairs for the district, um, to allow students to be able to sit in them. Um, as well as, again, if you, if you come, I'll always talk about coming back to high school in the summer. You will see kids outside without chairs and finding their own way around. So, um, I do know that there was some question about the amount of space we had outside, say, at the elementary complex and the middle school where we have three schools. Um, I've spoken with the principals there. We're fully confident that as many classes that wanted to go outside, we could certainly accommodate. Uh, they may not all be under a tent. It may not be all on a chair, but we could certainly accommodate, you know, outside learning. There, there's no question about that. Um, with regards to something else, I didn't write down a little subtext, Stacy. What else was there about outside?
No, I think you covered the outside stuff, and then the next was the cleaning and what we're using for materials and then a sports update and then a transportation.
All of the chemicals that we will be using are EPA-approved chemicals. I can just, I can just say that. I mean, this, these are things that have been vetted, tested, et cetera, down the line. Um, and whether they be a spray cleaner or part of the back, you know, a bottle sprayer or a backpack sprayer, um, that's what we will be using. Um, in most cases, we will be using things with disposable rags. Not that it's a good for the environment, but it's much better for COVID to wipe something down and toss it rather than trying to clean it. So, um, that's the piece with that. The MIA stuff, um, they came out, the, the fall season has been moved back to September 18th. That's a Friday. Um, the, the, all sports in the fall will be able to be played except for football and cheer. They're going to fall into what's known as the fall two, or no, fall, it's, it, they're adding a fall season between winter and spring. Um, and so, um, that they've shortened each of the seasons to accommodate that. Um, but again, that's when football and cheer will fall into. Um, I think that's about it for that.
Can I ask a question, Keith? If school, if, if we are full remote in the fall.
Yep.
Do we hold fall sports?
That's a decision that would be made that I'm not in charge of.
I can tell you that the last I had heard that it would be very difficult for us to be able to offer in a remote because if we don't have that ironed out, it would be, we would have to kind of go back to the state. So they haven't really told us definitively, but I do know the longer we would go remote, the less likely it could happen. But it's not definitive at this point.
Okay, because I, I real, I thought I read something on that on the desktop that said if a school is fully remote, they are not participating in fall sports. But I could have totally made that up in my head.
It wasn't definitive. I think it was really, the way I understood it was that, for example, if you're in a red spot or a yellow spot and it doesn't, it's not deemed safe for you to open, and that's why you're remote, then it's less likely that you could do sports as well.
Okay, that was good clarification. Dawn?
And I also thought it included something where they may revisit it come October 1st or subsequent to opening. And if we get moved from green to yellow or red, they could pull it and we could stop doing sports. Is that correct?
Yes, everything, Susan will attest this as well. Everything is always, everything we're doing is really up to where we're at.
Keeping the numbers down.
But yes, it's all, it's from the state level. And so, yes, I mean, the whole thing could get pulled. There's no question.
Right, subject to change, even if we are able to start that way, yes.
Catherine, did you have a follow-up on the cleaning? I just, you had brought that issue up, so I just wanted you to.
Yeah, thank you. I, um, I honestly, this, this was a question from the community, and so I don't know enough about the chemicals to say whether or not Keith answered my question. So I need to go back and read the document again and then probably email Keith the question, but thank you.
Lisa, did you have your hand up?
Oh, sorry, I have a couple of questions. Um, so a question from teachers who live in town. So this is all teachers, not teachers who necessarily work for Holliston, but teachers who work for any district. Um, are we putting those kids in a separate category? Because we did ask the question on the survey. Um, and some teachers in town, I've gotten emails and texts, are assuming, based on what their own home superintendent where they work has told them that their kids are going to get more time than, you know, other kids in the same grade. But I just want us to say something to the teachers of town where we are in figuring that piece out.
So that really is, um, something that we would want to talk through during our bargaining process because it's still something, uh, we desire to support our teachers and help them because childcare is a big concern right now. The, the part that we haven't been able to work out is equity from district to district. Some districts, for example, have already determined that they're going full remote, and that means those children in those districts, their parents are coming to teach with us, but they don't have an opportunity to go to school. So that impacts childcare even more negatively for those parents. So because of our numbers, we would be hard-pressed to help parents with childcare by school choice, for example, coming to our school. But we are trying to think about creative ways for parents that are teachers in our schools and have our own students here. Can we creatively support them? So with our model right now, the K to three students are slotted to come full day, fi- five days a week. So we feel that that really minimizes the impact to that group. The grades four through eight, we haven't gotten to that level of discussion. But again, our goal is really to, we, we're still trying to be creative with some of the staff that we have and programs that we may be able to offer to try to support our teachers with childcare. We just haven't gotten to the point of finalizing any discussions on that.
Yeah, no, I knew that was, that piece was bargaining. I'm really asking more for the teachers who live in town but work in another district as teachers.
Oh, we have not, I, I, yeah, I'm going the other way. Sorry about that. Yes, we haven't, we haven't gotten to the level of that request either because we're just still trying to figure out the numbers of students that are asking for remote at this point and in person. And I think once we can finalize and see if there is any give on that area, then we could have that level of discussion as well.
Okay.
And, and Lisa, I think they were also referring to is a conversation around the state, if there was going to be that reciprocal agreement across the state. And, um, we've expressed, you know, interest in that, if that, um, you know, we'd ask to explore the numbers as that came about, but it hasn't come to fruition at this point.
And I think, you know, unfortunately, I think there are some superintendents in other districts that have given some teachers who live in Holliston the impression that their kids are going to fall into a, you know, a group that's more, that is offered more in-person time. So I think there's a lot of confusion out there.
We haven't been told by any districts in the region that they're going to, uh, say, if we have a teacher who lives there, they're going to have their kids be there full time. Uh, so, uh.
Right, because we, we need the same, as Dr. Patel was saying, we need the same agreement. So if we can help offset some of that, can you help offset some of, so that our teachers can come back to work? And like I mentioned already, if some schools have already determined that they're going full remote for a month, they can't offer that reciprocal, um, situation, and it creates a, more of a dilemma for us to try to support our teachers.
Really something, I wish this, that's something I feel like the state could help us with. Okay. Um, next question is, are we gonna, I thought, uh, did I miss this already? But are we going to have our building-based meetings next week?
Yes, and I, that was on my, my next thing to talk about was that we do have family Q and A's coming up next week at all four buildings. And the discussions really reflect back to the plan that we voted on on August 10th. So we're going to be able to, our principals are going to be able to be there. I will be there. We'll be answering questions specific to that plan, but still knowing that it could be subject to change. And we can only speak to the plan that we have in place at the moment. But yes, we have two sessions at each building, and each principal is going to be sending out those dates so that parents can jump in by Zoom.
Okay, so are those, are those all happening next week or?
Yes, all of them are happening next week. And they're, they're doing a daytime and a nighttime, so they're doing six or seven at night plus a daytime offering for each building.
So parents should look for emails from their children's principals about that.
Yes, if they have not already gone out, they're probably going out tomorrow.
Okay. Um, another question, I've, I've gotten questions from several parents whose children participate in E S Y both in person and remotely. And they, s- saying that they assume that their children will get more in-person time because, you know, if they qualify for E S Y and qualify for extra time, then they assume that that would extend to the regular school year. When are we going to start letting parents know if their kids are on, on an I E P, if they fall into that group that's going to get more in-person time? Or more in-person services or what have you, whatever's.
And I had this conversation with Kelly as well because obviously we know that parents are waiting for that answer, and we're trying to support all of our parents that are struggling with these decisions. It will be, as we mentioned before, a very small percentage of our students, and it would be our more high-risk population. There are some, there's some work that SSAs have put together in the different buildings to give some of that data to Kelly. But again, I think ideally, we, if we can offer it to more than that small percent, we would like to extend it if there are students that are borderline, um, on that, not as high risk, but a little more borderline. Again, it goes back to how many numbers we can fit in the building at one time. So she is very close to finalizing that list, and we'll be getting that information out very soon. But we don't want to overoffer more than that number two, so it'll be, it'll be a small number to start with. But I, I do agree that tentatively, some of our students that went to E S Y and were slotted for that would be in that number. So I don't have the actual date that she.
You don't have a date? Okay, okay. Yeah, that was my, I get a lot of, got a lot of questions along those lines, mostly by email. Um, but I wanted to just kind of put that one out there. Um, and then, uh, my last question is. And then my last question is that, so we purchased, Keith, you said we purchased four tents. So are they the kind, well, somebody asked me if they're going to be open air so that we get good air circulation? And I just wanted to throw that, okay.
Yes, no sides. Four, four poles, net, I mean net, but cover, done.
Fantastic. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
And Louise? And Louise, you're muted.
Great, having that conversation with myself, sorry. So in addition to sending out the email to parents with the building-based meetings, can we post those on the district and building websites like smack right up front? So that they can just reference that in case they miss the email.
Yes, I will ask the principal to put on the site.
And then Keith, I just got a question, the four tents, I know you're struggling to find tents. I'm really sorry, it's like a whole family thing going here. In addition to the four tents, the four tents, like where are they going to go? What are your thoughts? Is there one per building or are they going?
Yes, one per building, we'll put, we'll put three inside the courtyards, one at the high school, Miller School and Plastino Courtyards. And then the final one's probably going to go outside the cafeteria at the, at the middle school. Again, we're just trying to protect it from high winds and the elements and stuff like that to minimize the amount of up and downs.
Yeah. Have you, okay, well, you know what, I have some other thoughts on being able to get some tents. So I'll take that offline, I won't bother you with that now. Thank you.
Andy?
Sorry to change the subject somewhat, but I don't, I don't think I need an answer tonight. But perhaps our next meeting, you could talk about how we're going to manage. Sounds like the Department of Health is now requiring all students to have the, the flu shot as well as faculty. So I'm just curious about one, how we're going to manage that? And two, for people who are choosing a medical or a religious exemption, what sort of documentation we're going to be asking for, for those?
Yeah, we haven't had time to delve into that discussion, although Lynn and I did talk about it briefly, I think it was today. It's all blending together, to be honest with you, because I think we just found out, what, yesterday? I, I already have had some parents email me because we are, yes, we are going to be required to ensure that students have that by December thirty first. Because some parents are thinking, do I change my decision and go remote now? I would suggest no. I would say if you are hoping to send your child in person, it is not required until twelve thirty one. So go ahead with that, it gives you time to deal with that decision. So get over one hurdle and then you could always change your mind and move to remote if you do decide not to have your child vaccinated. The documentation and, and getting that in place would be just like we do with all, all of the other vaccines. But it is tricky because it's a lot to manage and it's going to be later in the year and not at the opening of the year. So I will defer to Lynn on her, she's, as you know, awesome and she will make this work for us and, and help us communicate that to parents effectively.
Perfect, we can push that a little further down in the stack. Thanks.
Doesn't the town, I'm sorry, doesn't the town also have a clinic that they do typically anyway? But I think it's like in October, I'm not sure that, I don't know. Dawn, do you know?
Maybe we, yes, they do. And usually you have to go inside. But I'm wondering if we could even work with the town to set up some sort of tent and drive up and then get the information out there and do it sooner, like September, October. So maybe we could reach out and figure out who does that and, and how to coordinate it and make sure they're blasting out the info.
Yeah, I'm sure they would.
Like moving it up may not be that easy, but it's a great idea.
Related to that, I did, I mean, it's different than the flu, but I did see an email and I haven't had time to digest it all as well. But I did see something that the governor is going to work with schools. Should we decide or need to have onsite COVID nineteen tests as well? So that was good to hear. So, you know, I'll share that information out later because I just got it in an email today. So I don't want to overexplain that since I haven't had time to read the whole thing. But that was reassuring to hear that we may have some resources that way as well.
Cynthia?
So, yeah, actually, thank you, Susan. Along those same lines, I just wanted, if the community didn't know, that Framingham at Keith Tech is a site for the Stop the Spread COVID testing. It's free. They've done children too. My, one of my best friends actually went to do that last week. She was in line. It's, it's a drive up. So you can drive up and you can get testing there and it's, you know, doesn't go through your insurance, it's free. It's to anyone. It's not, you don't have to live in Framingham to do it. And it was, you know, I think she waited a couple of hours, but there's hours. And just check out the website on mass.gov for Stop the Spread if you're looking. I know, Emily, you also did too, but yours was Milford. I'm not sure that, that was a pop-up site. I'm not sure it's still there. Is it still there? Do you know, Emily?
It is, and I, I think it's managed through or underneath Walgreens. And it literally took us ten minutes when we got back from Indiana, we like went straight there. The, the key thing about going to these Stop the Spread or this pop-up site, that the key question to ask when you get tested is how soon the results will be available? Because they say fourteen days and you might as well just sit home and quarantine. You're looking for anywhere between forty-eight and seventy-two hours to get your results back so that you know, you know, whether you can walk out your front door. The other thing I just wanted to add to this, because I think that's a really important topic, is that, you know, as we approach September sixteenth, I really want to encourage families to really think about where they are going, if they're going on vacation, et cetera. If you already have plans, those things are difficult to change, but I strongly encourage people to stay local. And if they do go anywhere to get that test for their own sake and the sake of the community so that you're confident when your child walks into school that they are COVID-free and that other children are as well.
So do you want me to just add one little thing? Because I have the email now in front of me. I just think people want to hear this information. But it says that the Baker Polito administration announced today that local school officials will be able to request a state-sponsored mobile testing unit come to their school to test a group of students and/or staff if a potential cluster of COVID nineteen has been identified and transmission appears to have occurred within the school. So that is good to hear that the state is going to give us some resources. Because that is obviously a worry of how we get that done quickly. But it would be if we had a cluster.
Keith, I, I see before you unmute. Go ahead.
What? I wasn't going to say anything.
You're going to talk about transportation.
Oh, sorry. I was telling a joke to myself, I guess, so. Transportation, we, we sent out the request to parents, two different, two different requests. One for parents who are eligible for transportation, one for parents who are not, we're collecting names now. A, a relatively large, many more than I thought. Parents have relinquished their rights to a seat, which is a good thing. Some relinquished even though there wasn't a right to a seat, but that's okay. But, yeah, so we're, we're, we're chugging along. I mean, the, it has to be in by Monday. So on Tuesday, we'll be, I mean, we're compiled, we're working with the list now. We'll do our final compilation and start formally, I mean, we're working on the routes already. Assuming everybody was going to take the transportation who had it available to them. But, you know, we'll make adjustments to those routes and then we'll go from there. So hopefully by, I'm going to be optimistic next Friday, we may be ready to roll with bus passes. But I'm, it's, that's an optimistic, and Pat Weston's not here right now to yell at me for saying that, so. But, yeah, so.
You're not getting off that easy. So. Two questions. There's, why did you just?
Sorry.
Oh, I was like, what? Okay, two questions. There's some chatter about people who are trying to fill out the form and they, they can't get access.
It fixed it.
For a Google account. So that did not happen to me, so I'm just sharing fifth-hand what I'm.
It was fixed.
Excellent, thank you. Second item, can you please explain to people why there is still a bus fee and why it is not reduced at all, even though children may only be on the bus two or three days? Can you just share the, the reasoning behind that?
Well, I'll, I'll use simple math. We, we have less than half of the capacity on our buses based on the guidelines. So if I take, even if I took half of the capacity for half of the days, the cost per seat would be the exact same. You know, it's, you know, to the school district itself, we're not receiving, you know, we have no benefit from only half the children, you know, being transported. It's still the same cost. So, yes, I mean, if truthfully, in, in some ways, the, the cost proceeds even higher because I'm not going to raise as much in fees as I normally would. You know, on the order of a big number, over a hundred thousand dollars in fees, I expect to, for us not to raise. So if anything, I, it'd be easy to justify raising the fees this year by a, a, a significant amount. But that's not what, that's not what we've gone forward with or proposed. I, I felt it was fair to keep the fee as what it was. As, as again, we, the cost on a per-seat basis to the school committee is significantly more than it has been in the past.
There are some people who may not be eligible for transportation and therefore may not get a seat on the lottery. But may also have a situation where parent schedules are not as flexible. If I'm one of those parents, who can I email? Or who do I contact to talk about my own specific case? And I, I need to be really clear about this. This isn't just everyone emails this one person. This is, you know, the grade seven through twelve who, you know, who may need transportation, who may not get in the lottery. Who do they reach out to?
We've had internal discussions about that exact situation because obviously we're going to end up with, you know, for the seven through twelve children, I'll end up with potentially, it was going to be closer to two hundred and fifty seats. So if I get closer to three hundred seats, we're still not going to be able to meet the demand. There's no question. We have talked about how do we do the lottery with regards to, do we give, is it a true one in whatever odds? You know, we have three hundred seats, I have six hundred people, is it like a fifty-fifty shot? Do you give preference if one sibling gets it? Do you give preference for younger children? Do you give preference for further distance? We haven't, I'll be honest, we have not come up with a recommendation yet on that or a suggestion on what's the fairest thing to do. I, I would worry that a, a, a truly, a truly subjective way of having people tell a story on their situation is, is very risky on whose story is more valuable. You know, something a lot more objective, like younger kids first, further distance first, or something like that rings a lot truer to me. You know, I, I don't know. I'll be honest with you, if you're suggesting we go down a path of, of collecting stories, stories, I don't want to say stories that are not true, of situations is a better word, of situations for these families, then that's fine. We can, we can have them email their, their situations in. But I, it's going to take a, a crew to look at them and to make a determination. It shouldn't be one person because it's certainly a lot of pressure on somebody to determine somebody's situation is more valuable or more challenging than somebody else's.
Okay. Peter, it's your turn to be in the hot seat. No, I'm just kidding. Can you share about the PD, staff PD that's upcoming? And thank you, Keith and Susan.
Does Dawn have something?
Just one quick while we're still on the reopening. When will families find out what days their kids are going, right? For work and childcare purposes? I know we talked about trying, even if your kids are spread out through more than one school in the hybrid model. It's my understanding that you're going to try and keep families together. So if you have a child in Miller and a child in the high school and your last name starts with B, you're, you're hoping that these kids are going to stay together and go Monday, Tuesday together, go Thursday, Friday together. But when will families find out what that split is? So they can make preparations for which day it's going to be.
So that is related as well to our data collection. So I'm going to have, we'll, we'll have that final piece to the puzzle as far as which students are opting for full remote. And then we'll be able to move into that next tier of trying to figure out which cohort is cohort A and cohort B. And then there will be a certain students that will be there full-time even in a hybrid model because they might be special needs and those will be going out as well. So I think they all kind of, they all kind of fall together. And I would say that early next week, we'll be able to start putting those pieces of the puzzle together and get that information out. But again, I just always like to remind parents that it's still subject to change until we worked out some of the other details. But at least getting that tentative schedule out would be helpful. But it also doesn't solidify that we're ready to go either.
Peter?
Okay, yeah, we're, so in the midst of preparing, you know, we were granted those ten additional days at the beginning of the year. So we're looking to prepare those in order to best prepare our staff to begin this really unique year. We're looking to, you know, we're hoping to have a combination of in-person and remote experiences, though that is still being discussed. We're looking to have, you know, lots of kind of shorter chunks of professional development with ample time for individual and shared processing opportunities for people to apply the learning and, and think about how does that apply for their class? And opportunities for collaboration as well as individual preparation for this upcoming year. Some of the key topics, first will be really focusing on health and safety. And so some of the kind of subtopics underneath that are understanding the COVID nineteen virus and the use of P P E and how we could kind of keep ourselves safe both in school and, and outside. Overview of the health and safety plan and protocols. You know, so there'll be a presentation, but also lots of opportunities for additional questions. And then lots of kind of preliminary conversations about this through the staff question and answer. But we'll certainly build upon that in those days. Health and safety for specialized populations will be another topic. And then also the idea of preparing your classrooms with health and safety in mind. The next big, big topic is around hybrid and remote teaching, teaching and learning. And what does curriculum design instruction assessment look like in those environments in order for us to learn from our experiences in the fall and build upon them to make our degree really strong and able to kind of support a kid's learning. Some of those subtopics in that area are best practices and tools in a hybrid learning environment. And a lot of the way we look about, look at it is, you know, how, how, what are some of the tools and practices that you use in this hybrid environment to present content and model skills? How do you facilitate whole group and small group discussions? How do you support independent and collaborative work? And how do you provide feedback in effective ways? And so we'll be looking, okay, what does that look like in a hybrid environment? What does that look like when kids are in person but six feet distance and not having quite the same, you know, opportunities for classrooms looking like they typically do? But also, you know, perhaps more importantly, how, what does that look like when our kids are remote? And how do we kind of toggle between a remote kids and in-person kids in order to have the puzzle pieces fit together to really support student learning? Kind of connected to that is around synchronous and asynchronous practices. And how do we create balance and tools and management of that to make it effective? Then there'll be, you know, there'll be lots of opportunities for various specific technology integration tools that might be effective. They might start with kind of the basics around Google Classroom and, in Seesaw. But even, even those things that have become kind of second nature to us have various levels of application. So I know some teachers have done some professional development this summer in, in those areas and have found, you know, some of, even our most expert tech integrationists have found, you know, that there are even more capabilities than we have been leveraging in the past. So there'll be topics around that as well as numerous other technology integration aspects. Kind of connected to that would be also how do we use the various technology equipment? So we're looking to, to have iPads with, with some stands as well as their, the new laptops that teachers are getting so that they can both kind of instruct and Zoom at the same time. And so how do we, how do those pieces fit together? That's a kind of a piece where in-person professional development will really be valuable so that they could do that practice in the classroom with the, with the technology that they have. And so those are some of the other areas, particularly in the elementary level. We're looking at, you know, as we continue to build our skill in delivering a workshop model in elementary literacy, what does that look like in a hybrid environment? Fortunately, we have some teachers who are incredibly skilled. And also Cynthia Merrill, who's our consultant, is not only an expert in literacy, but she's also an expert in technology. She spoke at the. She spoke at the ESTC conference a couple of years ago. She's like, both, both aspects of, of the work are her passions and, you know, I wish we were getting her in more fortunate circumstances, but we kind of have the best of both worlds as far as her capabilities. So she'll be working with our staff around that. And in doing so, you know, we really look at that workshop model, not just the elementary level, but that workshop model really kind of mirrors those best practices that we were talking about before as far as, you know, how do you develop, deliver a lesson? You know, and what are different ways in a hybrid environment you do that? How do you provide feedback? How do you do small groups? How do you do discussion? All those parts are really part of the workshop model as well, and they're also part of just good teaching in, in general, but also teaching that has lots of different possibilities even in this remote environment or hybrid environment. So those are some other areas. We'll also be looking at, you know, social emotional wellbeing and, and self-care, both for students and staff, and also some professional development around equity and anti-bias. And especially starting with the point of like, how does equity connect to the reality of, of, of the world we're facing right now as well as the reality of kids' different circumstances as they navigate both the COVID-19 itself, but also a hybrid environment? So that'll be another layer about, about that. So we have lots of different topics and we're going to kind of break it down and, and come up with short chunk workshops with applications to really support teachers in, in their preparation for the beginning of the year.
Yeah, Louise?
Um, I just want to, first of all, thank you. And actually, let me just back up one sec. I want to say thank you to Peter and Keith and Susan and all of our administrators and staff that have been working through the summer on this. It is the impossible Rubik's Cube to try to put all these pieces together and evolve our teaching methodologies to accommodate such a peculiar environment. And it's, it's been like a 24/7, super stressful summer for all of you, and I just want to thank you for that. I think it would really help parents, frankly, and maybe us. If it's the right time, like this might just be the straw that breaks the camel's back for you, but if, if you with frankly Dan MacLeod at your side, for those of you don't know in the public, Dan MacLeod is our Director of Technology and Digital Learning, which is very much a integrated kind of curriculum role, not just a, a technology, you know, hardware thing. I would love to have the two of you together perhaps demonstrate what this looks like to parents so they understand it and can get a better feel for it and more comfort. And, you know, I'm not talking about a big fancy dog and pony show, but you know, what is the difference between synchronous and asynchronous? What might that look like for a third grader or, you know, a sophomore in high school? And what are some of the tools that, you know, additional tools you might be using to assist with engagement for both students and families to make this all more effective? So just throw that on your to-do list and whenever that's appropriate. You know, it's, it's probably premature now, but I just think it would be so wonderful if families could see that kind of an action, I think would really help before the school year begins at some point. Thank you.
So I, I smushed sort of Peter's, his own agenda item in with the school reopening update because I wanted each administrator to be able to share sort of an update. So are there any questions for any of them? Anything else that's sort of lingering? I mean, I know that, so I personally have been dumping in questions into that shared document with, with the entire committee and, and the administrators for the questions that people are asking. I don't know if anyone else on the committee is also adding to that. So there are lots of questions there that will help you form, you know, the FAQs and in future communications. But does anyone else on the committee have any immediate questions tonight? No, you're good? Okay. Well, thank you to the three of you in particular for, for sharing all that information with us. At this point, we are going to talk about the health and safety monitor description, job descriptions. Susan?
Yes, I'm going to share my screen so I can pop it up there. Can you see it? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, so, you know, we pulled together some information that we felt would be important from some other descriptions that I saw out there. The most important part of this obviously is that we need extra hands on deck for health and safety for students related to ensuring that potentially we have surfaces that might need additional cleaning in between the sanitization, helping students with monitoring them in bathroom situations to limit, again, the number of students that would be in there to have hands on deck that could help students pass through the hallways and monitor physical distance, social slash physical distance in hallways. So all of the above is important to these roles. They wouldn't be necessarily helping to support instruction in the class, but they might support going into the class for various times of the day, such as lunch and potentially helping with masks breaks and things like that as well. So the qualifications, I mean, I looked at the part about abilities related office equipment and I thought, do we really need that in there? Well, the only part of that that I think could be a possibility is if we have, if we ever have them collect data around safety to support us with monitoring student safety and if they're doing what they need to do compliant-wise, they might have to enter some data to report information to the office if there are any safety concerns and things like that. So that's why it might be fine to leave that in there. But as I mentioned, most important things are being able to help with assessing students as they enter school, making sure that masks are being worn, making sure they're following all the rules, hallways, bathrooms, mask breaks and so forth. I don't know if you want me to read all of that, or I mean, I know you've had it ahead of time, but it was really just to make sure that we could get you to approve this job description so that we could then post it as soon as tomorrow to try to get some additional staff in place as soon as possible to get us to the opening of school.
Cynthia?
And I just wanted to ask, thank you, Susan. How many of these are you hoping to hire? How many health monitors are you looking for?
Right now, we're looking at one per grade level and we would have 13 within the buildings to, to help support so that they'd be helping with multiple rooms, but really supporting each grade level because there are different needs at the younger grades and the upper grades.
Dawn?
And if there was a period of time this year where we did have to pivot to remote, what would this person do?
And I think it would depend on if it was a short-term thing or not. We probably would wait to see if it was going to be just a short, because sometimes we might have situation where we had to shut down temporarily for a cleaning, deep cleaning situation. So we clearly would keep the staff on deck then. If we went into a long-term situation, we may have to revisit that and consider whether we would keep them on, depending on where we were in the school year. We would make the position subject to, with the hope that they would start right at the beginning of school, but depending on how we do start the year effectively, if we start different than our original plan, then we would obviously delay the start date a little bit as well. And, and we can't promise the actual end date because of that. So yes, there are those unforeseen pieces and we would make sure we would put that into their job describing their, their offer letters as well. But they would be eligible for benefits based on the hours that they work.
Dawn?
Would there be any capacity for them to work as a substitute if needed, if we moved to remote?
That definitely could be an option because depending on their skill set and their ability to do so, we often do need substitutes, as you know, even in a remote setting, we might still need to fill in for a teacher that has a medical appointment or is not able to work for sickness or anything else. So yes, that definitely could be a potential option that we could use in that way as well.
Okay, thank you.
And Louise?
Okay. Sorry. I thought I had a few questions. So again, how are they being distributed across the building? And if they're being used during lunch breaks, is that, is that to relieve a teacher from that responsibility or does that vary by building? Or is, is it to supplement staff available for lunch breaks? So that question. And then if you described this earlier, I had to step away for a minute, I apologize. What kind of training will they receive, you know, across the board, like from health and safety training to technology training? Because the way I'm seeing that there's a, a bullet in here, by the way, this is very comprehensive, so thank you. There's a bullet in here that references, you know, well, just the fact that they might be a substitute, but that references, you know, assisting in classrooms. And so will they be trained on how to potentially support kids who may be remote in the moment, et cetera, and all of our systems, et cetera?
We, we do view this as more of a supplemental role specific to health and safety because we would, we look at our paraprofessionals as, as our instructional support roles. So this would be in addition to, for, really specific to those health and safety needs of our students. It doesn't mean they wouldn't maybe fill in for brief times if a teacher had to step out of a room for their own potential mask break and things like that. But we really, and, and I do have technology in there, I did say that up above. I don't envision the technology need significant because I really think that might be them enter some, entering some data collection related to student behavior, related to safety. That's the only need I could see in that area. I don't know if Peter or Keith can think of anything additionally to that, but I really want to make sure that we have that, we, I think I started to say, one per grade level is the, the goal right now with the hope that they're really supplementing all the health and safety needs of students.
But when you say a substitute for a teacher, I mean, if a teacher is out for a day or worse, could this person be pulled into that role?
Well, I think what Dawn was saying is if we got into a remote situation, could they, because then we may not, we wouldn't have that work for them if we're not in the building because they really are specific to the needs of students in the building. And she was saying, could they potentially be allowed to work as substitutes to support us if we did have teachers out that are teaching remotely at that point? And my thinking was if they had the skill set to be a substitute teacher, yes, we might be able to utilize them in that way. Whether we would switch them over to that substitute role and pay scale at that point is to be determined. We really haven't got that, gotten that far in the conversation.
Well, I guess, sorry, I'm, I'm trying, I'm asking a very specific question. There's a bullet, I don't know, six or seven down. So substitutes for teachers and other educators as needed. Now, I totally get the, oh, we need, can you step in here for 10 minutes? You know, Mr. So-and-so had to step out of the classroom, so that's one thing. But do you ever, and see a situation, not in the remote environment, but in an in-person situation where one of these people is substituting for a teacher for longer than like, you know, a period?
Yeah, no, I think that would be more of an emergency situation. For example, if a teacher got sick or something and had to exit immediately, whether it was a suspicion of a asymptomatic, symptomatic situation related to COVID, then we might have that person step in for physical safety of students. And that's how I envision that. I don't think we would consider it longer than that.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine?
So I was wondering if any discussion has happened or if there is a, a precedent for using an agency for something like this? Like I, I see what Dawn was talking about in terms of, you know, we hire someone and then three weeks later, it turns out we're going full remote and now we hired this person with, you know, finances and benefits and, you know, that, that finances are such a concern in these unprecedented times. Is there a way that we could use like a home health agency that employs not nurses or aides, but like a PCA, a personal care attendant or like a, like a home health aide type of role where the training is not as specific as being a nurse or a nurse's aide, but where the training is more specific around health and wellness and environmental things? Because it would, it would do a couple of things, one of which could be financial. You know, we wouldn't have to get involved with benefits for these people because they would be getting benefits from their agency. But also that if, if say that individual was exposed to COVID and needed to quarantine for two weeks, now what do we do? Whereas if you go through an agency, they backfill that position. So we would never be without someone in, in theory. You know, I understand that there could be a shortage of all this too, but I just, there's a lot of benefits to using an agency and I just didn't know if that had been talked about or discussed or if that's even something we can do.
No, I, you know, this agencies do come up as good fill-in situations. I do agree with you on that. Typically, they're at a, a much higher hourly rate because they all, they pay the benefits to them, so it doesn't save us money necessarily. In some cases can cost us money because they do have to have this flexibility and this constant influx of people. And a lot of times the agencies do require that you commit to a certain amount of time. So even then, like the, you know, 60, 90 days, you're, you're stuck with their contract. It does vary, but I have seen in many cases you are limited to taking on their staff members for a set period of time and wouldn't have any flexibility to end that model if we went into a remote, for example.
Yeah. I was just thinking, just again, too, what Dawn was saying about how, you know, we hire someone and now they're employees and now we're paying unemployment and we're paying health insurance and, yeah, I just wanted to throw it out there as a, as a possible mostly financial benefit.
Lisa?
Yeah, piggybacking on that same concern, could we maybe, is, is there any way to hire these positions as a short contract, like maybe only hire them through December 31st or something like that so that we're not necessarily obligated for the whole school year?
Yeah, I mean, because of the nature of the positions, the, the dates would be TBD and it, we wouldn't be locked into the full year. We could certainly, I did talk to Keith about putting in some language about the start end date to be determined based on needs of students and school situations as well.
Okay. So we wouldn't necessarily be on the hook, like say we have to go remote after a month or something, we wouldn't be on the hook for paying them for the rest of the school year?
We wouldn't, no.
Okay.
We can always lay somebody off, Lisa, that's not, you know.
Oh, but, but, right, but we, would we be on the hook for paying them unemployment benefits though?
Either way, you would be, yes.
Yeah.
For the, for the rest of the school year?
Until they, until the unemployment runs out. I mean.
It, it depends on how many hours that they had, you, they could, you know, turn out many hours they worked, how many hours they were employed in other places, all of that impacts those things.
I guess I was thinking if they had a specific contract that expired like December 31st, then, oh, they'd still get unemployment. All right, nevermind. Thanks.
And Louise?
So Lisa's on the Budget Subcommittee along with Andy and we began discussing this a little bit, like at our last Budget Subcommittee meeting, which was now a few weeks ago. And I've tried to do some additional digging and, and have had some further discussions with some of the Planners Committee members and we're going to follow up with the town because it is tricky, the unemployment situation, it like, it's like a trigger, right? The second we hire someone, we trigger it. And Susan's right, there's, you know, a number of days, hours, et cetera. I, I discussed the agency thing, but I'm in a home full of home health aides right now and it's, it's expensive. And then the, you know, I thought, is there another type of agency we might be able to go through or just hiring part-time help? So I, I think we're, we're trying to look into ways to mitigate this. The challenge is that the town is self-insured for unemployment and in most economic times, that's pretty good. That's a great place to be, but it's a little bit of a challenge in this environment.
Dawn?
So I had a question where, back to where it says substitutes for teachers and other educators as needed, would it be possible to say substitutes for teachers and staff as needed? And I guess it, to the point of, could this person, because it sounds like we're going to have a number of them, be versatile enough to cover, say, if we had illness or needed to quarantine cafeteria workers? Or what about not obviously serve as the nurse, but a nurse's assistant? We had talked about, you know, if someone shows symptoms and a parent is coming to pick them up, maybe even bringing the child out to the parent instead of having another family member who could potentially also be infectious or symptomatic walking through the school. So you would need someone to either escort that sick child out, curbside pickup, or the, you would need someone to stay in the nurse's office at the same time. So I guess, is there any way to change the language where it says substitutes for teachers and other staff to make them versatile enough to cover for cafeteria workers or cover and other staff to make them versatile enough to cover for, um, cafeteria workers or cover as a nurse's assistant? Or, I mean, if you had, um, if you had, uh, administrative assistants that had to quarantine or be home, would this person be able to fill that position if we changed the word to staff?
Well, it, we do have, as you know, at the bottom, um, we have these language of may perform other reasonably related business duties as assigned by the principal assistant principal. And I would consider those reasonable business duties to fill in briefly in the office to take phone calls or things like that. I would say that the walking out, because we do want to make sure we minimize parents entering the building for safety reasons, so walking students out to the car, to me, would be very specific to the health and safety role already and I would expect that to be part of it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I might actually change the word substitute, though, as to maybe fill in briefly for, because I don't want it to seem like we'd let them substitute for the whole day.
Okay, I'm just scrolling through. Any other questions? I don't see any hands. Um, Susan, can you unshare the screen for a moment, please? Okay. Um, does everyone feel like they have enough information to vote on this, these positions? Can you give me like a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Is it okay with you if I'm, I mean, I just wouldn't like to make that change, fills in briefly?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I just don't want to imply that we're trying to sub for the whole day or things like that.
I just, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but just in this really unique year, if all other options were exhausted, I would think we would still want that option, though we know that that would be a last, last resort. Um, because I don't, yeah, I don't think that's our intention at all, um, but I think it's such a unique year, um, that, you know, having the flexibility if we had to, uh, I think would be.
Yeah, and I think that's why we did put it in the yearip, we went back and forth on that.
Yeah.
Any other? And Louise?
Right. I, that just gave me a thought. I think you're right, Peter, you definitely want to reserve that option and the degree to which we can find people who might be qualified to serve in that role as well would be huge. Um, and I guess where I'm going with that is for a lot of recent college graduates who, right now, are enjoying unemployment because there isn't any. Um, and, you know, I would love for us to think broadly about the, the posting of this responsibility because it could be a stepping stone into a future teacher position or what have you. So, um, it, I think it'd be really helpful if we post this more broadly than we typically do beyond school spring to try to, um, engage staff who could serve, you know, in a, in a, in a capacity of the teacher and who are comfortable with technology, a little bit younger, maybe less at risk for getting sick, all of that, you know?
Yes, and sometimes I've had us in other places post, sometimes at Bridgewater State and different colleges, so I'll, I'll talk to Lisa about where we've used in the past and see if we can consider other options for that.
Dawn?
And for the middle school and the high school, is this position a full six hours or are we reducing it down to four hours? Because that's when most of our students are there, or do we have any flexibility in terms of not having all four work six hours, maybe having two, say at the high school, if there's one per grade? Um, having two of them work for four hours and two work for six, are we, is this six hours across the board, times every grade?
So we did talk about the fact that there may be a small portion of students that do need to remain to get, uh, their grab and go lunch at the high school. We know that's gonna be minimal, but still need some, um, adults there to supervise them until they get picked up from school. So I think that, Keith, it would be a six-hour position at that point, correct?
Yeah, i- i- yeah, it's gonna depend on need, but I mean, Dawn, we do have the flexibility to hire them for any, any amount of time. So, um, you know, I, I agree, though, we're with, uh, without knowing yet what's going on after school, I wouldn't want to, you know, not have coverage if we needed it, so.
Susan, so you're looking for approval to post this job description for at least 13 positions?
Right now, that's what we have, um, the principals and, uh, we all discussed about, yes, one per grade level, so it would be 13. And we would start the year and hopefully manage, because we do, we are hiring a few additional paraprofessionals to support the instructional models at the younger grades as well.
And I don't know if this is appropriate to ask or not, um, but is, what is the pay grade for this?
Or can we just understand the budget, the total line item budget for it? Like what it's gonna cost the district?
Keith, you have that number? Yeah, I know he had it at one point.
Yeah, I think that's really important.
This will fall under CARES money, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's completely appropriate for CARES. Um, the, the position at priced out, it's at, uh, at, at the amount that we've done is a $286,195. Yes, Dawn? If you wanted me, as opposed to Susan.
I did, Keith.
Hopefully somebody else.
And you, for the benefit of the public here and, and also for us, what do you mean by it will fall under CARES Act? Just tell us quickly what that means as we digest that number.
Sure, we, uh, the, 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 every school district in Massachusetts received, um, an award from the, from the, from CARES, um, the federal program, uh, the, the DESI divided it up by $225 per student. Our amount is just slightly over $600,000 for those, that $225 a student. It's based on your, um, chapter 70 enrollment number. So, um, so we have a $600,000 award that we have to spend by June, uh, June, which was June, uh, December 30th. So again, we're, we need to pack all this into there. The, the, before June, June, before December 31st amount is $119,000. Um, so that $119,000 of that $286 will be applied to CARES. What else can I tell you about that? Anything I said? Sorry.
Um, I don't know, Dawn, did you answer your question? Because I, the, the only, the weird piece about this is I totally understand that we need to post this to be able to hire the people, to be able to get them in time and I'm not suggesting we don't do that. Um, but I do think it's important for everyone to understand that this is sort of one, I think, known element of this plan that we know we're gonna need to invest in, but the other elements aren't, um, you know, we have an estimation of them, but we don't know for certain yet until we finalize everything. And this is not an insignificant cost, I just want everyone to understand, there's a number of other pieces to this puzzle that we have yet to pay for, if you will.
Yeah, I was wondering, eh, at the same time, if we're gonna, do we have a budget number for bus monitors? Don't we have to have a mo- a bus monitor on every bus?
Yes, um, we're gonna, we're gonna absorb that into our paraprofessional number, um, because the bus monitor is an add, it's an hour added, say, to a, to a paraprofessional's day as opposed to, um, hiring somebody who's gonna have nothing to do during the middle part of the day, so.
All right. Any other thoughts on that, questions, concerns about this? All right, so with that being said, is there a motion to approve, um, the health and safety monitor position? Um, actually, I should say, excuse me, COVID-19 health and safety monitor, um, and that we are approving this position and approving, uh, the district to post it for at least 13 positions, um, as of today. Moved by Cynthia?
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Andy. All in favor, Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Miss Handstad?
Yes.
Ms. Kotschon?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Sevard?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes.
Stacy? Uh, you added the word at least, um, and the only piece of that that makes me uncomfortable is that I, I feel like the committee needs to know definitively if it's going to be more than that. I, I don't, I don't want to leave that blanket and open because we don't know what else. We haven't yet approved the rest of, of what will come and be needed, so I just would ask the administration to come back to us if you feel there's gonna be a change in that number.
Yeah, we're not anticipating that, that we're posting for the 13 as of tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and they, in that, of course, anything related to the budget needs to come through committee approval, absolutely.
Right, well, it doesn't always, so that's why I'm just, but in this case, I feel like we need to.
Well, in this case, because we're in an unprecedented time, it needs to. Okay. Um, I have not signed any warrants this week unless Keith has got one down the hall that I need to sign. Okay. There are, um, the minutes of the policy subcommittee meeting on June 9th, 2020, in your packets, uh, for your information. We have scheduled an executive session, uh, for next Thursday, August 27th, at 7:15-ish, I think? Because I know that, um, some of us will be in negotiations, uh, with the HFT that goes until 7:00. So I'm gonna post it for 7:15 just to give us a little breathing room. Um, after tonight's meeting, though, does anyone feel like we need to have a meeting, a full open session meeting next week for anything?
We can always, well, we can't, well.
We can't.
Yeah.
No, are we, I know that, that the administration is gonna be busy with the, um, parents Q and A's, so. All right. So with that being said, our next meeting will be September 10th. Um, on that agenda, um, I honestly don't know because we haven't talked about it. If we will have the second reading of policy E B, um, EBCFA? Then do you think we're gonna have any other policies for that?
Um, we might have policy EBC, which is about emergency manage, management. It's the supplemental policy that is the umbrella policy for all these COVID-related, um, changes that we're gonna work on next time, so.
Okay.
But that's not a new policy, it would just be an update and a temporary, so.
Okay. And a school opening, um, update. So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Ann Louise.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Ann Louise. All in favor, Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Miss Handstad?
Yes.
Ms. Kotschon?
Yes.
Dr. Sevard?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. It is 9:29, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for your time, have a nice, restful weekend. Good night all.
Thank you. Good night.